We're August 7th, we're on summer session, our August 7th, it's August 21st. Our next meeting will be the Thursday after Labor Day, we're going two weeks, and then the day after Labor Day is Election Day. Everyone who's a registered voter, please vote. I just lost a board member.
You still have a quorum.
Okay, well, I feel, any announcements? It's the summer, so other than the upcoming election, so it's a primary election on the day after Labor Day, summer's winding down.
Well, Brookline Interactive Group is actually refilming a scene from Ferris Bueller's Day Off in an attempt to kind of crowd source that movie. Next Thursday evening, I think at 6:00, they'll be filming the dance scene of the parade, right in front of their office, right there on Tappan Street, and then that's the practice, and I think the filming is Friday morning, I think starting at 8:00 or 8:30 a.m.
Okay, yeah.
Just quickly, I'll just mention that Brookline Day is set for September 23rd, Sunday, it's always a very fun event. Climate Action Committee will have a table, as well as many other departments in the town, information, lots of things for the kids to do, it's always a lot of fun, I enjoy it. The other thing is that we're trying to arrange for a demonstration or an information session about massenergy.org's program of helping people buy, get a new car, buying an electric vehicle at a deep discount. And I'll let you know more about that, we expected first the date to be September 15th, but that may be moved to Brookline Day as well, so let you know, but I just wanted you to know, anybody who's listening to this, who's thinking about buying an electric vehicle, you gotta check this out, because...
Yeah, really, I've been interested in that.
Yeah, you go to massenergy.org, has a, their website has a very good description of the vehicles that they partnered with dealers, and they, you know, describe it and what you can get it for, so you're, that's one very good way of getting information.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so any public comment? I see none, so let's dive in. We have minutes for August 7th, I have a couple of little thingamajigs to change, any other? Okay, I'll move acceptance of the minutes for August 7th as amended, all those in favor, please say aye, select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I just mentioned, select person Franco is away, so we have an empty seat, so when I've been, I looked at, at select person Hamilton, almost said select person Franco.
It's okay.
Right. We have acceptance of a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. Mr. Murphy, welcome.
Good evening. So the Brookline Police Department has been awarded $10,823.40 in funding for the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. So that money will be put in for roll call training, so three large screen monitors and a laptop which is going to be used by the Training Division to make videos related to those roll call trainings. So we are asking that you accept.
Any questions about this grant? Okay.
I didn't know there was a Bureau of Justice Assistance.
Ah, there's all kinds of bureaus. This is what, state?
It comes through the feds, through Norfolk County, so usually goes into training and technology and officer safety.
Is this something that we, like, filled out a grant application for?
Yes, so you have to fill out, there's a certain amount for towns that are nominated or allowed to put in for them, and then they approve, so different departments use it for different reasons, we usually do it for training-related matters.
Excellent.
Pretty wide, you know, get just about anything, but we do the training.
I'm curious, are there other grants we get because we're part of Norfolk County?
I would have to say Norfolk County is unique to me, I know we get this grant all the time, because it's, I just know by the acronym JAG, it's usually called the JAG Grant, so I've heard that for years, as far as, most of them go through EOPS, Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, so that's usually where our grants come from that you might hear of.
So this is federal funding, ultimately, are there any conditions that the grant places on the town?
The only ones that I'm aware of is just a follow-up on ensuring that the, you know, the monies are used for what you ask for, it's usually supposed to be married to whatever your mission of the department is, you know, officer safety, public safety, and training and such.
It probably is one of the grants that the Attorney General can deny to us in the future if we don't get in line with certain immigration policies, for example, so we should just be aware of that.
Well, this would be, actually, this would be specific, that would probably be an example of how we would use this specific roll call training when we implement new policies.
Okay, so I'll move that we accept the grant in the amount of $10,823.40 for tobacco control.
Good evening, I'm covering...
For August 7th, we're on summer session. Our, August 7th, it's August 21st.
Mm-hmm.
Our next meeting will be the Thursday after Labor Day. We're going two weeks. And then, the day after Labor Day is Election Day. Everyone who's a registered voter, please vote. I just lost a board member.
You still have a quorum.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I feel, uh, any announcements? It's the summer, so, other than the upcoming election, so, it's a primary election on the day after Labor Day. Summer's winding down.
Well, Brookline Interactive Group is actually refilming a scene from Ferris Bueller's Day Off in an attempt to kind of crowdsource that movie. Next Thursday evening, I think at 6:00, they'll be filming the dance scene of the parade, right in front of their office, right there on Tappan Street. And then, that's the practice. And I think the filming is Friday morning, I think, starting at 8:00 or 8:30 a.m.
Okay.
So...
Yeah.
Just quickly, I'll just mention that Brookline Day is set for September 23rd, Sunday. It's always a very fun event. Climate Action Committee will have a table, as well as many other departments in the town. Information, lots of things for the kids to do. It's always a lot of fun. I enjoy it. The other thing is that we're trying to arrange for a demonstration or an information session about massenergy.org's program of helping people buy, get a new car, buying electric vehicle at a deep discount. And I'll let you know more about that. We expected first the date to be September 15th, but that may be moved to Brookline Day as well. So, let you know, but I just wanted you to know, anybody who's listening to this, who is thinking about buying an electric vehicle, you gotta check this out, 'cause...
Yeah, really. I've been interested in that.
Yeah. You go to massenergy.org, has a, their website has a very good description of the vehicles that they partnered with dealers, and they, you know, describe it and what you can get it for. So, you're, that's one very good way of getting information.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, okay, so, any public comment? I see none. So, let's dive in. We have minutes for August 7th. I have a couple of little thingamajigs to change. Any other? Okay, I'll move the acceptance of the minutes for August 7th as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I just mentioned, select person Franco is away, so, we have an empty seat. So, when I've been, I looked at, at select person Hamilton, almost said select person Franco.
(laughing) It's okay.
We have acceptance of a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. Mr. Murphy, welcome.
Good evening. So, the Brookline Police Department has been awarded $10,000, about $10,823.40 in funding for the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. So, that money will be put in for roll call training, so, three large screen monitors and a laptop, which is gonna be used by the Training Division to make videos related to those roll call trainings. So, we are asking that you accept the money.
Any questions about this grant? Okay.
I didn't know there was a Bureau of Justice Assistance.
Ah, there's all kinds of bureaus. This is what, state?
It comes through the feds, through Norfolk County. So, it usually goes into training and technology and officer safety.
Is this something that we, like, filled out a grant application for?
Yes, so, you have to fill out, there's a certain amount for towns that are nominated or allowed to put in for them, and then, they approve. So, different departments use it for different reasons. We usually do it for training-related matters.
Excellent.
Pretty wide, you know, get just about anything, but we do the training.
I'm curious, are there other grants we get because we're part of Norfolk County?
I would have to say Norfolk County is unique to me. I know we get this grant all the time, 'cause it's, I just know by the acronym JAG. It's usually called the JAG Grant. So, I've heard that for years, as far as, most of them go through EOPS, Executive Offices in Public Safety and Security. So, that's usually where our grants come from, that you might hear of.
So, this is federal funding, ultimately. Are there any conditions that the grant places on the town?
The only ones that I'm aware of is just a follow-up on ensuring that the, you know, the monies are used for what you ask for. It's usually supposed to be married to whatever your mission of the department is, you know, officer safety, public safety, and training and such.
It probably is one of the grants that the Attorney General can deny to us in the future, if we don't get in line with certain immigration policies, for example. So, we should just be aware of that.
Well, this would be, actually, this would be specific, that would probably be an example of how we would use this specific roll call training, when we implement new policies.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so, I'll move that we accept the grant in the amount of $10,823.40 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And next is a grant in the amount of $260,000 for tobacco control.
Good evening, I'm covering for Dr. Jett, who's on reserve duty. This is a grant that the Health Department has received in the past, and it's for, to support the activities of both the town and other surrounding communities around tobacco control. So, it's a $260,000 grant, $65,000 annually, and the communities that are also a part of this program, we administer the grant, is Arlington, Belmont, Norwood, Randolph, Stoughton, and Watertown.
So, this is like a four-year grant?
Yes.
Okay. That was the, it was, the press release from the state said $65,000, so...
Yep.
Okay, any questions? I'll move that we accept the grant in the amount of $260,000 from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the Tobacco Control Program. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, next item is accepting a contribution for $10,000 from 420 Harvard Associates for audible and pedestrian signals at the intersection of Fuller and Harvard. Mr. Ditto.
Good evening. This contribution is the result of a zoning board of appeals decision, number 15B, that required the developer at 420 Harvard Street to contribute $10,000 to the improvements, to the traffic signals at the intersection of Harvard and Fuller. The upgrades will involve installing a countdown and audible pedestrian signals. This is very similar, oh, it's exactly what we did at the intersection of Center and Williams. We put the countdown and the audible signals on that intersection also. So, we will be doing this in-house, when we get permission to spend the money, and we have a time limit of three years to do it, or else the money has to go back.
So, you'll do it in three years?
Yeah, we'll do it in two months.
(laughing) Okay. Any questions? Seems pretty straightforward. I'll move that we accept the contribution, the amount of $10,000 from 420 Harvard Associates to be used to install audible pedestrian signals at the intersection of Fuller and Harvard. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Frank, Frank Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. You're up for the next one. This is executing a Chapter 90 project request and environmental punch list with the Mass Department of Transportation in connection with the rectangular rapid flash signals on Beacon Street and Winthrop Road.
Yes, so, this is a request for, in the amount of $57,238.50. And, if you don't know what the rectangular rapid flashing beacon is, there's one up on Chestnut Hill.
Yeah.
Right across from skincare physicians and the, you know, obliques like this. Very, can't miss it. So, we had received a request to do some safety improvements at the intersection of Beacon and Winthrop. Some, it's a pretty high-volume traffic, as well as cars going at a high rate of speed. So, this request will give us the funding to install that.
Any questions? I'll move that we approve and execute a Chapter 90 project request and a Chapter 90 environmental punch list with Massachusetts Department of Transportation in connection with the rectangular rapid flash beacons at Beacon and Winthrop Road. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is accepting a grant for $50,000 from the Mass Historical Commission relating to the Brookline Reservoir Gatehouse. Ms. Gallantyne.
Good evening. So, the town of Brookline has been selected to receive $50,000 from MHC. We talked about this grant a little bit when I came before the board to get authorization to submit the grant. We have matching funds in hand. This is the maximum amount that they have awarded this grant cycle, and will require the adoption of a preservation restriction on the building and 20 feet from the base of the building.
Well, I'm glad that the extent of the restriction is clearly defined. There's a map with a clear rectangle, unlike some grants we've seen in the 70s that have tied us up in other parts of town. And we know that even with the preservation restriction, we're gonna be able to do what we need to do on the path.
That's right. We've actually reviewed all options with MHC staff. They're well aware that we're putting a comfortation in the building, and the options for path expansion that we're, that we've selected.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I'll move that we accept the grant in the amount of $50,000 from the Mass Historical Commission for improvements to the Brookline Reservoir Gatehouse, and authorizing the town administrator to sign the grant contract and associated documents. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And next up is executing a contract for $411,400 for improvements at the Jack Corain Skating Rink. Ms. Gallantyne.
Thank you. So, the town of Brookline is looking to award a contract for the replacement of the headers and supports, all associated piping, connections and fittings, demolition and reconstruction of the decking system in between the ice rink and the refrigeration plant. And I'd like to put this in context for you a little bit. So, the rink is comprised of a refrigeration system in the mechanical room that includes a chiller, compressor, and condenser. It's a closed loop system, in which the primary refrigerant cools brine water, which is pumped through a central delivery pipe and return that's located underneath the decking, in a concrete chamber and runs all the way in front of the main ice, and then in front of the children's ice, supplies the chilled brine through an intricate system of nearly 200 pipe connections and special nozzle fittings to the pipes that run underneath the rink embedded in concrete slab. It's this delivery system of special steel supports, piping, and connections that provides the chilled brine from the refrigeration system to the rink that failed last season, and that we're seeking to replace with this contract. The original system for headers and supports was installed in 2002. We're at about 16 years of operation without major repair work required. The system would have lasted probably 20-plus years at an indoor rink, but it corrodes far faster outdoor, with a shorter season, subject to the weather, and repeated freeze-thaw cycles. And it's difficult to see the supply pipe during operation, as it's not only under floorboards, but encased in ice. So, last season was a very difficult year for managing uniform ice temperature and quality condition for the ice. For example, with youth hockey alone, they utilized the rink six days a wink, a week. They had 25% reduction in practice time due to the condition of the ice, and 50% reduction in game time, 'cause it wasn't safe for game conditions. A typical loss would maybe be 10 to 15%, just with overall exposure to the elements. So, we assessed all aspects of the rink following the season, defrosted the supports, inspected the pipes and connections. We hired Noreen Siani to conduct an engineering study, and included their recommended replacement of the delivery system in the CIP. We put the project out to bid this summer, and are prepared to award the contract to American Refrigeration. American Refrigeration has a longstanding relationship with the town. They installed the original system and have an annual maintenance contract with the town for startup, maintenance service, and shutdown. We ask a lot, and we get a lot, from the Lars Anderson Ice Rink. The rink is in operation and staff from about 6:00 in the morning to as late as 11:30 at night, seven days a week, from the 1st of December through the 1st weekend in March. We have four full-time employees that are staffed at the rink to cover those shifts and, for those three months, and approximately 30 part-time employees who are skate guards, concessionaires, serving the public, and they're often teenagers to young adults or seniors. There are over 10,000 users over the course of the season, or uses over the course of the season. There are 7,000 individual admissions for free skate, 75 high school players, several hundred adult league and hockey players, 510 youth hockey players and coaches, and those numbers are growing. About a third of those players are now girls, and they are implementing their third all-girls team this past, this season. And several thousand people who attend for group rentals. Every school has an all-school skating event sponsored by their PTO at the rink. It's wonderful for community building and a great form of exercise, especially in the winter months, when it's hard to find outdoor recreational opportunities. Finally, the Recreation Department is offering, offers lessons, and is introducing new therapeutic recreation adaptive skating lessons for individuals of all abilities, and is planning some funny community events this season. So, replacement of the headers and supports is essential if we are to open the ice rink this year.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Lot of information.
I'm convinced.
I will just comment that my granddaughter has been involved in the ice hockey program, loves it. And so, it's been, my grandson as well. So, it's been a fantastic experience for them, and I'm sure for all the other kids as well. It's very crowded. Every time I go to watch a game, there's many, many people. So, it'd be nice if we could enclose it, so we wouldn't freeze to death.
Well, absolutely, and it's interesting you bring that up, is, you know, the Park and Recreation Commission has been in discussions with Brookline Youth Hockey for many years, really, about, is there a way to enclose it? Is there a way to site an indoor skating rinks that, frankly, you'd have better quality ice, a longer season, if not a year-round use, and overall more efficiency and payback in terms of operating costs?
I'm surprised we got 16 years out of that last system, out in the elements, and it's brine. I mean, salt is such a corrosive element.
That's right.
Any other questions, comments from the board? I will move, therefore, to approve and execute a contract with American Refrigeration Company, LLC, in the amount of $411,400 for improvements to the Jack Corain Skating Rink at Lars Anderson Park. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Frank, Frank Heller.
I didn't know I was bald.
Right.
He was looking at me.
Yes.
Select person Green.
Yes.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, next up is a contract in the amount of $132,000, in connection with the Single Tree Storage Tank Painting Project. Seems like every year, there's a, there's a, something at the Single Tree Storage Tank. Mr. Russell.
We keep pushing it out, that's all. So, we're finally doing it. Fred Russell, Water and Sewer Director for the Department of Public Works. Yes, so, the Single Tree Storage Tank requires the exterior surface restoration, which was last done in 2003. We solicited bids and received six bids, six responsive bids, five of which were extremely competitive. Caldwell and Associates, LLC submitted the lowest bid of $132,000. We checked references, contacted them, and it appears, and it's our recommendation, that Caldwell and Associates is the lowest responsive bidder, and we respectfully asked the board to execute and approve a contract.
Okay. Any questions from the board? See none?
How, how big is this storage tank?
Big.
Oh, it's big.
Lot of water.
Lot of water.
Yeah.
Um, okay. I'll move that we approve, that's a technical term, big. I'll, I'll, I'll move that we approve and execute a contract with Caldwell and Associates, LLC, in the amount of $132,000 in connection with the Single Tree Storage Tank Painting Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Russell. And, Mr. Wiggly, we have more to talk about with the Coolidge Corner School, a change order in the amount of $109,174.16. So, we're on, this is the home stretch.
It is. Good evening, Tony Wiggly with the Building Department. As you said, this is change order number 25, and if you like, I can run through them, or we can take questions, as you have in the past.
Um, are there any of note? This is, it's a bunch of items, some, most, most ad costs, a couple credits. These are kind of normal things that happen in a project, but is there any, anything you want to highlight here?
Well, number seven was an attempt to address the fence between the building and the neighbors' properties on Babcock Street. The existing fence, obviously, had been there for many years, and had a lot of vegetation growing into it, and it was, it was just been neglected over the years. And, had been neglected over the years, and, so, this, in addition, the plan's called for a six-foot fence there, and all of the neighbors wanted a 10-foot fence to replace the existing 10-foot, as did the school. And, we only had one chance to do that, because in the bylaws, you can do that of the existing, pre-existing. So, this was an attempt to address both neighbors and school concerns. And then, some of the others relate to the fire rating in the small gym. Item number three pertains to that, and, item number 10 pertains to that. And then, there are also some other site issues with revisions to the turf field grading and drainage, and things like that, so...
So, I guess the big question, two big questions, are the kids gonna be there, the, right after Labor Day?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the teachers will be coming back Saturday to start setting up their classrooms. The move will be, the move out of the two satellite locations will be completed this week. And, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the schools have arranged for parents to come through next week, and also for others, you know, for tours next week.
Right.
So, it'll kind of be the first opportunity for most of the public to see the building. And, all that being said, the contractor will be working right up until the students get into the building and beyond, because the commissioning and punch list, punch list will definitely happen into, into the fall. And commissioning will take about a year, because we want to make sure that the building is working as designed, efficiently...
Commissioning...
Commissioning of systems.
Okay.
We have to go through at least one winter and one cooling season to make sure all the systems are working properly. It's normal. It always takes a good year to make sure our buildings, our new buildings are fully working as designed. And, so, we'll be, even though that we'll be turning the project over to the schools, and it will be a school, the Building Department will be involved for a long time.
Talk about the budget.
The budget, we are on budget. We have the monies for this change order. We, that's another thing, we'll be working on a lot of paperwork. There are some significant changes in claims by the contractor, which we will require a lot of analysis and discussion with the Building Commission and others, but we're on budget.
Good.
Okay. This is exciting, and I understand they're planning a big public open house in October sometime.
Yes.
So, there'll be some limited open houses and tours, but then, the big public celebration of this big project will be in October. Okay. Any other questions? I'll move, therefore, where are we? Here we are. That we approve change order 25, and the, an increase in the amount of $109,174.16 to the contract, with showmanship design-construction connection with the renovations, in additions to the Coolidge Corner School. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, we have some CDBG stuff, and, Ms. Goff?
Good evening, covering for Joviol this evening. So, item J is a request that you approve and authorize the chair to execute eight CBG-funded contracts. There are seven public service contracts, and a contract with the Brookline Housing Authority for capital improvement projects at two of their developments, High Street Veterans and Colonel Floyd. All of these contracts are for projects and programs that primarily benefit low and moderate-income residents, including elderly and youths, two of the significant and critical populations that the town has historically directed CDBG funding toward. The board approved all the budgets for these activities when you approved the FY19 CDBG action plan. So, now that the agreements are in place, we're asking that you approve the contracts.
Okay, sorry.
No, that was it.
Okay, so, this is a house... Okay, so this is a housekeeping item. We have talked about these things in the past and approved them, but we need the authorization of the chair to sign the actual contracts. Any questions about this? I'll move that we approve and authorize the chair to execute the following FY19 Community Development Block Grants Up Recipient Agreement for the Brookline Elder Taxi System, $45,000, for, and that's administered through the Brookline Council on Aging. The Brookline Community Mental Health Center for the, their adolescent outreach program for $42,750 and also comprehensive services for children and families, $36,700. Steps to Success Work Connections Youth Training Program, $57,090. Brookline Housing Authority for Security Cameras, Playgrounds and Capital Projects, $79,921. And for their Brookline ESOL Program, $10,000 for the Next Steps Program, $10,000 for the Public Schools of Brookline, the Parent-Child Home Program, $1,400. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have some temporary licenses and the Police Department has reviewed them all and sees no reason to deny them, so I'll move them in omnibus fashion. I'll move that we grant three temporary all kinds of alcoholic beverage sales license to Helen, to the Hellenic Association of Boston for their annual Cathedral Greek Festival to be held on Friday, September 14th from noon to 11:00. Saturday, September 15th from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And Sunday, the 16th of September from noon to 8:00 p.m. at 162 Goddard Street, Goddard Avenue. I'll move that we grant three temporary wine and malt beverage license to Pine Manor College, 400 Heath Street as follows for a wedding. Sunday, September 9th from 2:00 to 7:30 for a wedding rehearsal dinner to be held on Friday, September 21st from 6:00 to 10:00 for a wedding to be held on Saturday, October 6th from 5:30 to 10:30. Also move that we grant three temporary all kinds of alcoholic beverage sales license Pine Manor College, 400 Heath Street as follows for a wedding to be held on Saturday, September 22nd, 5:00 to 10:00. 400 Heath Street for a wedding to be held on Sunday, October 7th from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. And for a bar mitzvah, bat mitzvah to be held on Saturday, October 13th from 1:00 to 5:00. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, we have some personnel items. Moving on to our main calendar.
Good evening. I'm pitch hitting for a bunch of department heads this evening on the authorizations to hire. Some of these positions will be familiar to you. The first one is the, the question of filling the vacancy of the Economic Development Long-Term Planner. This position was recently held by a planner who had focused a lot on the marijuana legislation. The Planning Department is really anxious to get this, this filled. And it's, it's something that, you know, we've seen a lot of benefit from.
Okay, why don't you just go through the, the others?
Sure. The Health Department, so this, the grant that you just approved earlier this evening, this would be to hire the person who would be administering the program. Finance Department, the Assistant Treasurer just recently became vacant. That's a critical position for Gina, especially around reconciling accounts. And unfortunately, we have a vacancy, another vacancy in this office. Stephanie Orsini will be leaving us and we'd like to get that position filled as soon as possible. It's a critical position for the town.
It sure is. And.
Very sad.
I was very bummed when I heard that.
We all were.
Okay. And I know Stephanie is roaming around here doing what she does best, which is trying to solve problems. So I'll move that we authorize the filling of the Economic Development Long-Term Planner vacancy in the Planning and Community Development Department. Also move that we authorize the filling of the Backbone Alcohol Control Program Coordinator vacancy in the Health Department. Move that we authorize the filling of the Assistant Treasurer vacancy in the Treasury Division of the Finance Department. And I will also move that we authorize the filling of the Assistant to the Town Administrator vacancy in the Select Board's Office. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're running about 25 minutes late and we have a licensing public hearing. And this is for Sunset Cantina. And this is a change of ownership. Ms. Gilbert.
Good evening. Jennifer Depazo-Gilbert here this evening for Sunset Cantina. And there are several things on, so let me go through it and let me tell you who I am with this evening. I'm here with me tonight is William McCarthy, who is the owner of the proposed license entity, Northsiders LLC, which is going to be doing business as Sunset Cantina. It's actually not a change.
Oh.
So they'll remain operating as Sunset Cantina. Also here with me is John Schalpak, who is the operating manager there now and will be one of the alternates. Then also with me is John Schalpak, who is, works at the Smokehouse right around the corner here. I'm sorry, Jason Gilligan. John Schalpak next to him, who is the manager at the Smokehouse and will also be an alternate manager here. So this is a transfer of the liquor license. And also an appointment of the alternate managers, John Schalpak and Jason Gilligan. We have proposed hours of Sunday to Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. That's a slight change from the existing hours, which are Sunday to Wednesday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. And Thursday to Saturday, 11:00 to 2:00. One thing you should note is that there was an addition to the building, which added some space about a year ago. Dan Bet, the Brookline Building Commissioner noted that the capacity should have been changed on the existing CV to increase it to 264. It was 216, 284, excuse me. So it was 216. Now that the new space has been opened up, should actually be 284 seating capacity. And that was updated on the application. So just let me tell you a little bit about.
So the, the calendar, Ms. Gilbert.
Is incorrect.
Is incorrect. It says 199?
Right. So the, the 199, it's my understanding and perhaps Mr. Kleckner, I don't know why that calendar notes 199, but the application was updated per the Building Commissioner's information to 284. The CV should have been updated after, after the addition of the space a year ago, but apparently it was not. And so the application actually was updated. The, well, as you're, while you're looking for that, I'll tell, give you a little background. The abutters were notified and the return receipts were handed into the Select, Select Board's Office this morning. Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Schalpak have over 40 years of experience in the restaurant license. Jason Gilligan is newer, although he has seven years in the business. They have, they own Smokehouse Magnolia as well as four other restaurants in Boston. They have two Emmett's Pubs, one is in Boston, one is in Norwood. They have a Scholars, a Cary Nation, and a Six B Lounge, all in Boston. None of their establishments have ever had a liquor license suspension or revocation. And they, as I said, they have over 40 years' experience. Both are serve-safe certified and also have crowd management certification. They are tip-certified and would like to extend that one hour on the license to be able to compete with all of the restaurants and bars. As you know, this location is right on the Boston border. So, any questions?
Yeah. Well, let me just clarify, Jennifer. So I, I think it is true that the, there was a, you know, error not updating it, but in Mr. Bennett's memorandum refers specifically to indoor seating of 239.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll, we will take whatever Mr. Bennett put down. He had 284.
That's exclusive of outdoor seating.
Okay. And I think if you add the.
Forty-five.
What does he have for outdoor? Because.
Forty-five.
Yes, that's right, what I had. So the total capacity would be those two added.
Forty-five.
So.
284.
Yeah, I think that's what I said, so.
Well, I'm just, you know, Mr. Bennett doesn't really control the outdoor. That's, he, the building code relates to indoor seating, so.
Yeah.
I just want, want to probably separate those in your.
So the proposed seating would be 239 and then 45 outside.
Correct.
Okay, so we have an experienced operator who has another restaurant in town. We have, we haven't seen you, which is a good thing for any violation hearings. So that's, that's, that's always good. And being that you have a place in town already, we know you know the, the regulations here. This is a interesting location in that, what, the sidewalk is in Boston.
Right, it is.
And the building is in Brookline, so we get the taxes and Boston gets the impact.
Just the way you like it. Just the way you like it.
Any questions from the board?
You can always differentiate an entity that has done business in Brookline before when they also include alternative managers on their application. So, thank you.
So I've not had the pleasure of coming to your restaurant, but I'm wondering what your policy is in terms of carding people who come in for, and want a drink.
I want, you need to come up to the microphone to just state your name and then.
My name is William McCarthy. To answer that question, well, weekends, we're going to use Doorman on the weekends.
I'm sorry, say that again.
On the weekends, we're going to use Doorman to card, ID, scanner.
You're going to card everyone?
Yes, of course, yes.
Even me?
No.
You shouldn't have said yes.
There has to be a little bit to call, you know? So we, we try and train all our staff, anybody that, you know, looks from 20 to 40, card them. Anyone that, you know, looks older than 45, you can be very safe to say that they're over 21, so.
And just to explain, on the, on the scanners that will be used on the weekend, that catches any out-of-state fake IDs. They're pretty prevalent. You can buy them online for $200 each, is my understanding, but the scanners do catch them, so.
Yeah.
I assume you have a high number of, a large number of students who are eating and drinking in your place?
Yeah.
So I think it's especially critical that, you know, I, I don't object to being carded. I'm, I'm actually pleased, but.
Yeah, no, we have a lot of cards that we have confiscated from students who try to go into the establishments, looking for, looking for liquor and usually just take them off them and ask them to leave. John, how many would you say?
Yeah, I gave Lieutenant Raskin today. Come call.
Even though you have a loud voice, our vast TV audience would love to hear.
I actually gave Lieutenant Raskin today at least 100. When we closed the Sunset Grill, he must have had about 500 in, in, just hanging around. But he asked me to supply him with some, so I came down today and gave him 100 at the police station. So that scanner works really, really well. And I had established a rapport with the BC because they graduated from there, so many student athletes did extra labs, stairs, or things of that nature, so it worked out pretty well. And we'll establish the same thing with BU.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's any members of the public, I'll note a 2:00 a.m. closure is being proposed for Thursday, Saturday, Sunday.
There was previous, excuse me, previously the operating hours were Thursday to Saturday to 2:00 a.m., but Sunday through Wednesday to 1:00 a.m. And I believe the proposal is to close at 2:00 a.m. Sunday through Wednesday as well.
That's correct.
Are there any abutting residential properties?
Not, not at this location, not at, not at 916 Conne.
Yeah, this is right at, on Camave, down near Pleasant, Pleasant and what's the other one?
St. Paul.
St. Paul. This, it's a very busy.
Commercial area.
Commercial strip that's alive at night. So I, I personally don't have any problems with it. Being that I don't see any members of the public, abutters, there aren't really any residential abutters close by, so I'm cool with it. Any other questions, comments from the board? So I'll make a motion. I'll move that we approve the application of Northsiders LLC doing business as Sunset Cantina, William McCarthy, manager for a transfer of license for Sunset Partners, Inc., doing business as Sunset Cantina, holder of license to expose, keep, sell, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages, be drunk on the premises, a seven-day common vigil license, 916 Commonwealth Avenue. Proposed hours of operation are Sunday to Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Alcohol service hours will be the same. I'll also move that we approve the application of Northsiders LLC doing business Sunset Cantina, William McCarthy, manager for a common vigil or entertainment, radio, tape, music, and television license at 916 Commonwealth Avenue. Proposed seating capacity is 239 inside and 45 outside. I will also move that we approve the application of Northsiders LLC doing business Sunset Cantina, William McCarthy, manager at 916 Commonwealth Avenue for the following alternate managers, John Schalpak and Jason Gilligan. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, and we have one more licensing item, and this is a change in operating hours. And this is the application of Julie Ellen LLC doing business, Kupels Bakery.
That's right. Good evening. I'm Julia Gorby. This is Farzad Gorby. You probably know him more than me, but I don't take that personally.
So what do you?
We're hoping to add Saturdays.
Oh, okay.
Currently we.
I'm sitting here thinking, what are you asking for?
We, we currently close on Fridays, one hour before sundown, but we're hoping to extend our hours to include Saturday so that we might offer our diverse Brookline population the option of coming in on Friday, on Saturday if they like.
How does that?
That's with the blessing of the rabbis.
Oh, really? Okay. I was going to ask, how does that affect your kosher certification?
All rabbis are.
We still maintain our kosher parv. We just won't bisham our shabbats, which is no business on Saturdays. So we kept that way as a loyalty to our customers and to our previous owner and just keep the tradition. But after 11 years, we think, you know, it's a different population in Brookline, especially up in North Harvard, try to get some business up there besides construction. So it'd be nice. It'd be nice to bring a little life up that end.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, I'll move that we approve the application of Julie Ellen LLC doing business as Kupels Bakery.
Right.
Holder of food vendors license for change in operation of, of Monday through Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And this adds Saturday to the repertoire. Don't put the repertoire in the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Hope to see you Sat, well, maybe this Saturday.
Oh, okay.
I think I'll be there.
Thanks very much.
Okay. And now we're ready for E-Da.
We're not quite ready yet. We, we have a little technical difficulty, so we're, our, our normal projector's not working, so we're just going to set up a temporary projector, so we'll need about five minutes of that.
Okay, so we'll take a five-minute break so we can freshen up.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, Stephanie, sorry, sorry that you're leaving the conference.
I know, it's a terrible line.
I don't think this side here, I think that might just be off the damage, but it looks like it's.
I gotta call the references, I think.
That's an internal that's causing that.
Okay. All right, this is what we have. Sorry about that. All right, as usual, you saved my life. So, maybe tomorrow we can. Everyone grab the board. Thank you, I'll call you tomorrow. I'm a guy for right there.
Okay, so I'd say, looks a little different. So, we're here to talk about the economic development update and five-year work plan.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Saner.
I'm Paul Saner, co-chair of the Economic Development Advisory Board, or EDAB, and I'll introduce the other teammates that are here tonight in a few minutes. Let me start by thanking you for this opportunity to provide a very brief update, and then for staff to present the five-year economic development plan, which we are seeking your support of. By way of background, EDAB has two primary mission focus, the first being to foster economic growth, and the second is to promote the vitality of our commercial areas. One way that we do the latter is through our facade loan program, where we prioritize those applicants that are creating a more energy-efficient envelope. Shown on this slide is Village Works in Brookline Village, one of the newer businesses in town that we're very proud of. EDAB does not automatically say yes to every possible way to increase growth, and as one example, we said no to the very ambitious Herb Chambers expansion. We weigh the potential public benefits from a project with the impact on neighbors, and in that instance, it didn't make any sense for us to recommend that particular project. Our success is a function of community process, where we attempt to take a creative approach to outreach, and where we rely very much on the leadership of our staff, our economic development board members, select board members, and perhaps most importantly, neighborhood leaders. We are very proud of the new commercial property tax growth that we have generated over the years, and in particular, the support that that provides for the funding of town in school services. This slide shows the tax yield overtime for sponsored EDAB projects, and you can see that in 2013, we passed the two million dollar overall new tax growth contribution, and that increases to three million in fiscal year seventeen, four million in eighteen, and we're projecting in excess of five million in the present fiscal year nineteen. To put the new tax growth into context, let me, by example, reference the recent May override town meeting vote, and in particular, the latest EDAB project to Brayd Ground, which is the new hotel on Brookline Avenue that will become a Hilton Garden Inn, that just began construction. If hypothetically, that property were completed and stabilized, we're estimating on a very conservative basis, it would generate in excess of a million dollars of additional new taxes, and that would be sufficient, as an example, to pay for the ten townside staff positions that were funded by the override, which includes librarians, planners, firefighters, and a new social worker for the council of aging, plus still having a quarter of a million dollars left over for snow removal equipment. The approach to new projects takes a tremendous amount of community process in order to be successful, and this slide depicts for, again, EDAB-sponsored projects, with the projects on the side and time marching across the top, as represented by pale yellow showing the amount of time for those various projects in the pre-regulatory, meaning the community process stage, bright yellow for the actual regulatory permitting process, and then orange for constructing the project. So, using by way of example, one of my favorite projects, the one closest to my home, the Cleveland Circle Development, which began generating returns to the town last year, that community process began in 2009, and that's before I had all this gray in my. So, I, in closing this initial phase of the presentation, I'm very pleased to introduce the other members of our team, my co-chair Anne Myers, Cara Bruton, the Director of Economic Development and Long-Range Planning, and Trevor Johnson, the Economic Development and Long-Term Planner. Trevor, like Cara, has his master's in urban planning from Harvard's Graduate School of Design. Cara's now gonna present the five-year staff plan, and then I'm gonna come back for a very brief summary, and then we would be delighted to try to answer questions that you might have.
I'll make one note, Paul, you have on the chart that the process for two Brookline Place started in 2009.
That was the second incarnation.
Exactly, exactly, I think it started as.
Two thousand and three.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that, so it took a couple of tries to get that one.
Correct.
Good evening, again, my name is Cara Bruton, as Paul said. I wanna take just a second to thank our EDAB members, but especially our co-chairs who are here tonight, who have made all of this happen, but it's not just EDAB members, it's also select board members past and present, who have led a lot of the study committees to have these properties move forward, as well as literally hundreds of residents and business owners that come out to the community meetings. It's a lot of effort, takes a lot of time. Another project that has fits and starts was one on eleven Boylston, where Neil, at that point, was on the advisory committee. It was actually permitted in 2008 as a medical office building, there was a downzoning, there was a freeze on the downzoning, so these things come and go before they actually provide revenue to the town. And this last row here, you'll see, also has fits and starts Waldo Durgan, and we don't even, we're not even presuming any funds coming from that state committee at this point. We've looked at it in 2011, 12, 13, under a previous select board. Neil Waschinsky will be joining me again on September fifth for the next study committee meeting of Waldo Durgan.
I better put that in my calendar.
Yes, you should, so it takes a lot of work. In your packets, what was in your select board packets late last week, is not focusing on what we've done, but what we're gonna be doing in the next five years, and this is the perspective of staff's work, so of course, we align very closely with EDAB's mission, but just as a reminder, the division also now includes long-term planning, as well as hopefully soon, our sustainable program manager, we're kind of taking that rule on as well. Tonight, I'm just gonna be pulling out a couple of examples that were in your packet, and we wanna keep it short, we're bringing items that are focused on economic development, and that also require significant public participation. As Paul said, we're not asking for any vote tonight from the select board, but we wanted to make sure you know where we were headed, because we wanna make sure that our planned work aligns with your priorities. So, in 2012 is the last time we did a five-year plan, look ahead, since then, we've, with EDAB leadership, held workshops that was a cross-section of all of our boards and commissions, which was very useful, talking about what makes good development. We had a panel discussion of a couple developers, this slide of Mick Jagger's from Ken Lewis's presentation, he was riffing on how do we get what we want, you can't always get what you want, but sometimes you can get what you need, so we heard from developers. We also had a series of community engagement throughout 2017, different types of activities, this was supported by a grant that we received from the Massachusetts Planning, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which is our regional planning agency. One thing that we really learned from them is different community engagement tools, so we had focus groups, we had workshops, we had open houses, we had one-on-one conversations by going out to school fairs, Brookline Day, and we were able to kind of broaden the group of people that we're talking to, rather than the same old board and committee members that are gonna be the most involved anyways. So, all of those efforts led into the five-year planets in your packets, so as far as what's different, well, one thing that's different this time around is that we have guiding principles. These are three basic core ideas that underpin all of the work that staff does. The first one being inclusiveness, not just diversity, but also thinking about geographic neighborhoods, you know, whenever we have a meeting, who's there, who's not there, who should be there. Pragmatic optimism, this is a very important guiding principle for us. We have to be pragmatic, we have to get things done, but we also have to continue to be optimistic in order to do our work. And the third being innovation, we wanna make sure that we have a fresh perspective on. on achieving our goals as we move forward. So as far as our focus areas, there's, the first one we want to do over the next five years is improve our messaging and communications. We want to help you, we want to arm you with ideas and thoughts, so that as you're out in the community, you can help explain to residents, for example, the benefits and impacts of new commercial tax growth. We realize that that message, many people don't know that we're even a town, many people don't know that we have a split tax rate, and so kind of, we need to be continually educating what the work is that we do and why we do it. Encouraging commercial development, especially mixed-use development as we look forward, and of course, it needs to be appropriate to the neighborhood. Promoting business success, we're relying more and more on support from the business community and partnering with a variety of different community groups, which I'll explain in a minute. And finally, long-term planning and regional issues. This includes, for example, Strategic Asset Plan, a major parcel study that we just completed, which we will be implementing as we move forward. So tonight, I'm just going to focus on two of those items, commercial development and promoting business success. As far as promoting business success, we've, there's a couple of interesting things that we've done recently, just as examples. Basically, a beautification project in Coolidge Corner. So this was planters and pots in front of some of the stores, as well as improving the landscaping of a parking lot in Center Street East Parking Lot. We had the public art project that some of you might remember in Coolidge Corner that was connected with the First Light Festival. The tables and chairs program that has expanded to not just our restaurants, who come to you before licenses, but tables that are open for anybody to use, not just consumers. And then finally, events that have popped up and that are becoming self-sustaining, such as the annual Village Fair in Brookline Village. All of these examples, all required partners. We did not do them on our own. In many cases, we did not lead them. So whether it's parks and open space helping with Coolidge Blooms, the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association, the Brookline Arts Center, for example, did a curation and a call to artists for the public art project. And so one thing that we've learned is that not only do we need community partners to get more work done, but we also need community partners, because often, they're the best equipped to do that work. So the Brookline Arts Center, you know, that is their job. They know public artists, they understand how artist processes work, and they were at the front end of getting a quality public artist for the town to enjoy. Moving forward, one of the items that you'll see in the chart for promoting business success kind of zooms out and takes that idea that we've been doing, but looking at the town as a whole. We've had site visits to places like Portsmouth, New Hampshire, where there are formal relationships with business groups or other community groups that market the town as a whole, as a destination. You might recall that at the end of last fiscal year, I came in front of the select board to transfer some funding within our division to be able to do an RFP for marketing services for the town. The Chamber of Commerce is who we move forward with for that proposal. So for about $9,000 for this whole fiscal year, they will be promoting the town as a whole. I am asking, not for the answer tonight, but I will be asking you in the future, in coming fiscal years, when budget's available, for that to be a standing-line item. So for example, Northampton does, not Northampton, sorry, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, their agreement with the Chamber of Commerce is $40,000 a year. We're doing $9,000 a year. Our chamber, our community is less tourist-based, our chamber is much more nimble. For example, this is one of the board members in front of a sign at Logan Airport. Because of the work and connections that our chamber board members have, they were able to figure out when there was no advertising scheduled in one of those big advertising boards in the airport, and so they were able to get this advertisement for free.
Really?
So that's the kind of partner that we're looking for, that we can spend relatively small amount of money, have a larger impact for the whole town. Switching back to commercial development for the next piece, in the chart that you saw, that Paul was talking about with all the funds, you know, each one of those rows was a specific property, a specific kind of site and a portfolio of developments. We are shifting, we want to shift from looking at site by site to looking at corridors. And there's several reasons we want to do that. And I'm sorry that the colors on this projector are so dark, but we're, for example, not just looking at Brookline Place, say, but rather looking at the corridor of Route 9 from where Gateway East ends, all the way through to Cypress Street or Milton Road. That's example of one corridor. Another might be all of JFK, Harvard Street area. The reason why we want to shift in that way is because we want to think about planning for places, not just developments, as Trevor said earlier today. We also want to be more efficient in our use of town resources and also community processes. We want to provide for a wider set of desired uses and outcomes on more parcels, rather than putting all of our eggs in one basket on a single parcel. Another pragmatic reason is with one or two exceptions, development in the future will require aggregating properties. We've, you know, kind of moved from developing town property to developing property where town has some land interest, like an easement, to developing property that are the large ones owned, you know, by a single owner. And in the very short future, we will be needing to look at aggregating several parcels by different owners in order to take the next step for commercial development. We also want to be ahead of the developers, right? So before people come in front of us with concepts, we want to make sure that we've adequately reached out to the community to understand better what their desires are. This is suggested timing of how we would look at these corridors, but of course, it's not exact, nor are the boundaries defined yet, but we want to give you a sense of our priorities. So the reason why we're interested in looking at the Boylston Street corridor first is because right now, there's a lot of momentum from the neighborhood leadership. They were very excited about the bringing back Boylston Study, and they're ready to implement some of those ideas. This builds on the comprehensive plan, as well as sentiments that were echoed in the recent state MIPC report. The second, so this is the area, just to be clear, that we're talking about is from Washington Street, where Gateway East ends, to Milton Road. The second reason is Chestnut Hill Office Park. So thinking about trying to get ahead of development. Chestnut Hill Office Park is on Route 9, this is as you're coming in from Newton on Route 9. It's the first parcel on your right as you're coming into town. This building on the right here is the Sisson's Bank Building. You might even have assumed that it was in Newton when you drive by it. The Health Works Building is here, and then there's an empty building, it used to be like a blueprint machine, company way back when. This parcel, not including this parking lot here, everything else here is under control by one entity, and that's WS Development. That's the same developer that developed the street and is continuing to add on. So they have a land lease on this entire site, which is 5.3 acres. So just to give you a comparison, Waldo Durgan, which is a lot of, you know, a lot of effort, that's one acre. This is five acres. This is now mostly, as you can see, parking, there's parking structures here and parking structures here. The existing zoning, if we do nothing, the existing zoning allows for an additional 300, an additional 340,000 square feet. Now, to give you a sense, Children's Hospital is 230,000 square feet. So this is a big site.
And that's, oh, it's, oh, right?
But the problem is that it's zoned for office.
Right.
It's not zoned for mixed use, it's not zoned for maybe recreation uses we might want to see as part of the site. It's very limited in its use. So the second reason why we want to look at Route 9 is to make sure that we're capturing and getting ahead of any concepts for this property. We have had preliminary conversations with WS Development, they have a very good reputation with it, some of the town meeting members in Brookline of this area, but we need to make sure that the community's out front of this.
Yeah, and they're doing some very interesting stuff right across the street.
They are.
And we're not part of the conversation.
We're not. And they probably have a year or two more of activity of adding on or changing things around on that side, and they will be coming to us. So we want to make sure that we understand what the community wants first. The third reason is pretty exciting for me, the Central Transportation Planning Staff, which is a quasi-public agency of the state. Heather, does that sound, is that about right?
Yeah, it's like an arm out of Boston MPO, right? Yeah.
So we, Trevor and I had a conversation with them and Dan from Transportation Department, too. We went, first, we went down to Mastod, and they said, that's, sounds nice that you want to think about looking at the rest of Route 9, why don't you start by talking to the Central Transportation Planning Staff? So we did that, thinking we would get another runaround. And in fact, they are very interested in starting a study as a major corridor, a priority corridor, study that they would start this October. So we were very, I'm glad you're excited, Heather. I was extremely excited that they were...
That is exciting. They do great work.
Yeah, we, and this would be very, very early front-end work, this wouldn't be design work, but rather looking at, you know, in the way distant future, what might different cross-sections look like of Route 9, or more pragmatically, what might intersections look like to improve pedestrian crossings across Route 9? So jumping forward a little bit, and this is not readable at all.
That part of Route 9 needs help.
Yeah, it does. And especially with the two communities, the different types of uses. So this is just a diagram of all of the different layers of activity that it takes to do a corridor study well, and in our opinion, it's just an outline. So the top here is, you know, the state infrastructure. If we can get this study done with the CTPS, and then in future years, have design, development, construction. The second layer here is what's under control by the local jurisdiction. So that includes doing parking studies. We imagine that some of the parking that's on Route 9 is illegal and may not be there in the future if we want safer crossings or bike accommodations. So we want to understand the impacts of our, we want to know that our existing capacity, think ahead about potential future development, and understand where parking might be provided that's adequate, but not too much, not too little. This middle layer here is public realm. And the idea there, that could be anything from design guidelines to other capital improvements that aren't within the Route 9 right-of-way, but things like Walnut Path, which is the pedestrian crossing that lines up to Route 9 next to Bold Lincoln School. Those are examples of things that are in the public realm that town can bring forward in design documents as improving to both accommodate commercial development, but also to make the neighborhood as a whole have a better quality of life. So all of these things take a lot of political leadership, a lot of time from staff, a lot of energy, positive energy from the community, and it also takes money. So the next, I'm just highlighting here, and it doesn't show up very well, but some of these things, like the parking studies and the capital items for the local level, would require local funding. So as far as the town meeting layer, in addition to zoning that we might see for the Boylston Street corridor, you will likely also see funding requests in the next two springs to fund for some of this work. So this is the last slide, this is the, you know, why am I here tonight slide? What we're asking for from the select board is continued leadership and support in the work that we do. Specifically, you can help us with one of our guiding principles of trying to be more inclusive. This is everything from what you're already doing as far as appointing diverse members to board and commissions, but also study committees. You know, I think we don't have to have study committees in the future that are only technical mix of people, of professionals, but also just different parts of view, different neighborhoods. And the second bullet there is, as we staff are creating community engagement plans, we will be asking you specifically to help us identify people, buildings, neighborhoods, or groups that should be invited to the table. Under the business success item, you'll remember that I asked in the future for a line item for town-wide marketing services to formalize our partnerships with some of our business groups. And then finally, encouraging commercial development, there, what we're looking for is funding, especially for the parking studies, as well as leadership and lots of evenings out in addition to your Tuesday nights, to help lead the community discussion about zoning changes or development in our corridors. Paul, do you want to drop up?
If you had a chance to read the plan, you'll, I'm sure, conclude that it's very rich, there's a lot of spots in it for EDAB members to step up their involvement. I believe that, given the town's long-term fiscal outlook, that it's incumbent upon the town to have a long-term economic development plan, which this is, I want to emphasize that it's just a plan. We are going to continue to be opportunistic, in addition to trying to follow up on all of these plan items. I'm very proud, as is Anne, of our Economic Development Advisory Board, in addition to attending 11 meetings a year. Many of the members are involved in ad hoc study committees and other select board-appointed committees, perhaps going forward, a committee on Airbnb, and maybe the land bank. We have a number of members that are involved in standing commitments, including the licensing committee, the zoning bylaw committee. Anne is very involved with the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association in the chamber. And we are looking for more board members to engage in outreach to our businesses, is just one example. Cara also mentioned the premium that we're trying to place going forward on marketing and communications. I'm going to ask that any of you that might know of a volunteer with expertise in that area, please give Anne or me a call. We'd be pleased to follow up. The same goes for a real estate lawyer, we could surely use additional volunteer support around complex structuring matters. So I am personally going to be able to step up my involvement with economic development in support of staff in the select board. And I want to close by summarizing the three areas that we're looking for support from the select board, all of which have been mentioned before. One is public education, two is helping us with specific projects and providing the leadership to move those forward, and then third is funding for consultants. We appreciate this opportunity, and we'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Sure, thank you. I think from my perspective, I think EDAB is one of our highest-functioning boards, and I've been involved in a number of projects that got their start at EDAB, and they've been good projects. It's a pity they take so long to get going, i.e., Two Brookline Place started 2003, and the steal is going up today. The picture you showed was probably a couple of weeks old, and the structure wasn't as high as it is today. And I don't think they've topped it off yet, but it's getting big. The pragmatic optimism, that's good. And I'm also glad to see that you're looking at corridors and a more holistic zoning approach, trying to get ahead of the developers. You know, thinking about, one of the criticisms thrown at us, say, at the 1200 Beacon Holiday Inn project, and also Waldo Durgan, was that we're looking, we're looking at both of those projects as just particular projects and not looking at kind of a more holistic district. And I think it's, you know, we kind of had to deal with the hand we were dealt, so I don't think we had any choice but to do it there. But I think it's good to, I think we need to get ahead. And I know that's something that you folks have been talking about for a while, but now we're getting there. So, and then, you know, having gone through the override that we just went through, and then an override three years ago, one way, one important way to keep the overrides as small as we can, especially in this time of increasing school enrollment, and we know that we have a bunch of capital projects ahead of us, which will probably yield more overrides, the need for more overrides is to encourage commercial development. So I think this is a key, a key part of our strategy to... So I think, uh, this is a key, a key part of our strategy to, uh, get ahead of the, uh, the cost curve and the need for overrides. So I, I thank you, uh, for, for doing this needed work and being so effective, both staff and, uh, the Economic Development Advisory Board. Uh, any questions, comments from the board?
I think your figure, the numbers you've showed in terms of how much you've, uh, increased the tax roll is quite impressive. Um, and, um, you know, of course I can think of about a hundred ways to spend the money. Um, and of course, it's always discouraging that even though we're supposedly only able to increase the amount of the overall tax levy by two and a half percent, our expenses always go up more than that. So I think some of this new growth money gets, um, helps us, uh, to not fall too far behind. And I think that is something that, uh, the community should be, and I know this board is very appreciative of, and I think the community is, is well.
Certainly, uh, to the extent new commercial tax growth can be generated, it helps, uh, keep, uh, the town more affordable while continuing to preserve the services that we all demand. And that's why Dr. Spurber, uh, spotted the need for E-DAB going back, uh, many, many years, as, um, Select Board Member Heller said, proposition two and a half is very constraining.
Speaking of affordable, um, I go into a lot of the shops in Coolidge Corner and the landlord, or the tenants, the commercial entities, um, sometimes complain that the rents are very high. I don't exactly know what to say to them when I'm confronted. I'm sure you get confronted once people know your role on E-DAB. What, what do you think? What do you say?
Um, it's a really tough question to answer. On the one hand, we want a very vibrant commercial area with, um, uh, not just, uh, Brookline citizens, but outsiders, uh, spending money, uh, in our community. And, uh, when that happens, it, um, has the, uh, potentially adverse impact of increasing rents and, uh, potentially making it, uh, more, uh, expensive and difficult for, uh, the local business owners that we all cherish, uh, to remain in town. Uh, and that is why, um, on the, um, uh, work that we do to promote the vibrancy of our commercial area, we focus a tremendous amount of that activity on our small businesses and making them as viable going forward as they possibly can be. Anne, you have anything else?
Unfortunately, the town doesn't own any of those buildings. They're all privately owned, so we, unless we want to start subsidizing rents and other things like that, um, there's not much we can do specifically about the rents. What we can do, and what we've been doing, is getting the tables out there, doing things and working with them to do things that make the area more vibrant. Um, and a lot of the things that we're, we're taking small steps, and one of the things that we're operating under is, um, a world now frankly, not just a country, but retail is changing dramatically. I mean, there's only so much, it's, it's going to change no matter what the town does. Um, and we need to position our commercial areas so that we can, we don't know what the changes are going to be, but we need to be in a position to be able to, um, react to them and accommodate them so that the town stays, the commercial areas stay vibrant. I don't know what that means because who knows what's coming, but it's, you know, it's changing rapidly. I mean, the, all the phone stores aren't there anymore, and now it's, it's other things, but I don't believe, I mean, we, we're getting, I mean, it's restaurants, it's, things aren't going to come in. There may be a few small euricas and things like that, really, um, entrepreneurial people who are coming in and opening small stores, but most of the landlords are renting to places where they can't, where there's no internet competition, because that's a safer tenant. Um, so, um, we, we can do, we're trying to do small things and working with the Chamber and working with the Merchants Association and the Village Merchants to, um, to do the best we can. But in terms of rent, I'm not sure what, that the town can answer that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is, uh, from the MBTA. We have a big project. I'm just going to step out for one second during the transition.
We'll just wait for Mr. Ocean's good return.
Okay. Sorry about that. So I understand we have a big project, uh, ahead of us on the Riverside line.
We do. Good evening. My name is Beth Larkin. I'm the Assistant General Manager for Capital Delivery for the MBTA. And joining me are members of my team, um, who are going to be very instrumental in delivering the project. So I, it's, it's a fairly lengthy slide deck. We'll be free to share this, you know, with you afterwards, and I'm going to go through it fairly quickly.
Okay.
If that's all right with you.
Yep.
Okay.
It's getting late.
We've got like 37 slides, so.
We've been here since nine.
Yeah. So again, I'm briefly going to give you just, you know, an overview of what the project is, why we're doing it, and what does it mean to Brookline. Um, so it's really a complete rehabilitation, a replacement of the signals between Reservoir and Riverside, and then there's track work between Beacons Field and Sections along the corridor. So there are a total of nine stations within the work limits. There are six sections of track work within the limits, five in Newton, uh, one in Brookline, and then again, full signal replacement between Riverside and, um, Reservoir with a little bit of signal work, you know, in Brookline around the Reservoir Station.
You, you guys already did, uh, Fenway to Brookline Hills, right? With the signals maybe 10 years ago.
So some, you know, a lot of the work that we do, particularly on the track replacement work, has been done by our engineering, internal engineering and maintenance forces. And regarding that specific project, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the history.
Okay.
So again, the, the limits of work within Brookline really are just to the left, just to the west on Reservoir, and then just to the east on Beacons Field. That's the track work, and the signal work is the red circle going, continuing to go towards out, um, Riverside. So we're going to be putting in a modernized signal system. We're going to be putting in centralized signal equipment. So right now there are signal cases about every hundred feet. They're going to be consolidated, the signal components into houses at each of the, each of the stations, um, starting at Reservoir going out to Riverside.
Is that right? World War I era?
That is correct. And an example of that is a picture on the bottom right of relay components versus electronics. So we're going to be getting into the 21st section, century with our signal components. Um, so we're upgrading of all the signal infrastructure, the signals, the switches, cables, um, hanging system. We're going to be providing a redundant power supply system, 25,000 linear feet of, of mainline track. Crossovers and switches is really a specialty track work to get from, you know, one side to the other. And we're going to be reconstructioning then the pedestrian crossings and the track pads that provide access to the right of way. I should mention that all of the work that's planned is within the MBTA's right of way.
Mm-hmm.
So what are the benefits? Well, the signal system should result in fewer delays on the Green Line. Fewer delays result in increased reliability for our customers. Centralized instrument houses, instead of having to go between stations, will all be located at the station so that they'll be easily accessible for our workers. Um, the new track will enhance safety, and then, um, because of the new track, we shall also be able to remove some of the speed restrictions that are currently on the D-branch because of the condition of the track. So our timeline is, we advertise the project in the spring. We gave notice to proceed to the contractor in July. The overall contract duration is 30 months, but the bulk of the construction work will be, you know, over about 16 months, but that 30 months is calendar time. Construction is scheduled to begin this fall, substantial completion in October of 2020, final completion in December 2020, and the total estimated construction cost of $74 million. So, you know, a big component of this project is what we call diversions, bus diversions. So we'd be diverting customers from the Green Line onto buses while we're working within specific zones. So there are three zones that have been identified for this project, between Riverside and Newton Highlands, between Newton Highlands and Reservoir, and between Reservoir and Brookline Hills. So even though we're not doing physical work at Brookline Hills, there will be a component of this project that, that is related to that because we'll be busing from that location, um, along the corridor. Most of the, the, the mainline corridor for the buses will be down Route 9. So let's talk about when that would occur. Because you think of that and you think, wow, there's a lot of traffic on Route 9. How is that going to, you know, work? Well, our busing will be from 9:00 PM to the end of service, which on the Green Line is typically about around 1:00 PM. So it's after the rush hour, evening rush hour. And then on weekends, bus services would, buses would replace regular service during the entire weekend, which, in whichever zone that the work would be performed in. I know this is fairly dense, but a little bit more, and this is probably the, the slide that I'll talk to the longest. So regular service will be provided with the exception of the following bullets below. So what we call early access, Sunday to Thursday. So early access is from the viewpoint of the contractor to be able to access the tracks. So we'd be looking to close, um, zones, one zone at a time, um, Sunday through Thursday, from 9:00 PM till approximately 1:00 AM. And we're expecting that the contractor will start in the fall, and we have a hard stop of December 28th in contract, and then we have windows over the next two years with which the contractor can work during the, during the evenings. They have to commit to a zone, so they can't be jumping around. So once they start in a zone, they need to stay in that zone for the weekday early access diversions. And it, you know, so then there's, then there's some special considerations. So during Red Sox home games, and I will say this October, you know, we're expecting that there's going to be some home games. You know, um, typically beyond this year, we would say that we would have, we would allow the contractor to begin work at 11:00 PM. Given that we know what it's like to have a home game during a playoff season, the games start late, they end late, um, we would say that we wouldn't be having any diversions during either weekends or nights when we'd have Red Sox home games.
That was one of my questions.
Yeah. Exactly. Now, in addition to the, the weeknight, um, work, there are also 15 planned weekend diversions. Now those, those can occur at different locations within the work limits. They have to be requested and approved by the MBTA. There isn't a set time for that, so we would certainly take into consideration other events that are going on at that time. In addition to the 15 weekends, however, because this will become relevant in a moment, if we have already planned to do bus service very proximate to this project, the contractor may take advantage of that and do more work on this project on those weekends, so with it, to them, they would be like freebie weekends. And I say it in that way because, you know, at the end of the day, there might be more work on weekends than what is showing here. And I can, I'll tell you why in a moment. So, and bus service. So we're expecting a maximum, this is from our bus operations folks that have done a study of the corridor, 14 buses would be required, they'd all be ADA accessible. Um, planned headways between the, between the buses about eight minutes, and we'd expect to have, you know, approximately 10-minute longer commute. Again, because these are the time periods of the longer commute, would either be 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM or on the weekends. So again, in sort of terms of, um, expected timelines for when work is currently planned, and again, some of this is subject to change because the contractor's still working on, um, securing their laydown areas. They got their NTP the end of July. They submitted their 90-day schedule early in August, which got it just about to October. So on October 6th, there happens to already have been planned a weekend, um, diversion for Zone 3, so the, the section closest to Boston in Brookline, um, for our Newton, um, I'm sorry, for our family portal protection project. And so our contractor's looking to take advantage of that weekend to do work. There's also planned the following weekend as well. We expect that there's going to be a Red Sox game one of those two weekends. So, you know, right now, again, the contractor's looking to start on one of those two weekends. At this point, it looks likely that October 6th will be the date that will be available to begin. And then beyond that, they would be looking at doing some of the weeknight diversions. Once that gets finalized, again, this is somewhat the current thinking, all of that will be communicated well in advance of whenever that would, work would be, begin. So this is meant to be sort of the early start. The earliest the contractor would be out there would be that weekend. It won't be before. Following that, we, the contractors expressed that they would be looking to start in Zone 1, which is the western end of the, um, corridor, and that is from Newton Highlands to Riverside. We do expect the contractor to do the full baseline schedule in the middle of September, so we'll have mu, you know, we'll have the entire contract duration at that point. And as I said, prior to the start of any, any construction, meaning field activities, there'd be communications, flyers to butters, um, adjacent business owners, notifications on vehicles, and announcement on vehicles as well. Those are, that's kind of like the, the guts of, in terms of the timing. Specific work at the two specific stations, this is really meant to be, show the, the work and the work limits. So each of the blue lines represents, you know, the inbound and the outbound tracks. So we'd be looking to, um, we're going to be replacing that track infrastructure, and it's not just the top of the, you know, the rails and ties, it's also the bells. And we'll get in that, to that in a minute. We've got some specialty track work, which is highlighted in the yellow circles, which would be the type of work that would be needed to be done over a weekend, just because of the size of the, of the pieces that would have to be brought in and laid. But the regular weeknight track work, the, the regular track work we would expect would be done during weeknights. And then at Reservoir Station, again, the majority of the work within Brookline is track work. And again, the two blue lines represent the inbound and outbound corridors, which would all be replaced. Locations identified in circles, special track work, which we would be doing over, um, the weekends. The one red dot you see there, that's where we would be locating a signal house. And again, the signal house is meant to be a centralized signal location. We would be eliminating the, um, other cases. And then the signal work would basically begin at the signal house and continue west. And then go into Newton. So the general timeline for weeknight early access, 9:00 PM, the, whichever zone that the contractor's currently working in, service would shut down in, within that zone. Buses would then, customers would then be directed to the buses, which would have, um, stop locations proximate to the Green Line stations. The engineering and maintenance team from MBTA would make this, the work site safe by powering down, um, that portion of the D-line. They ground the catenary, they test it to make sure that, um, everything is clear. Contractor mobilizes to the track pad, maybe nearest to the work site. Um, in this case, they've talked about coming from Reservoir. I know that we have a pad at Beacons Field. And then they get the all cleared and begin work. The buses continue till about 12:30 AM, which, at which point that, um, normal service ends. The contractor would continue working up until about 4:00 in the morning, at which point they would come off the, the corridor, and then the, uh, engineering maintenance team would come back, they powered up again, they run the test to make sure that they have, uh, be, be ready for the morning AM service. So that's just sort of a general progression of the timeline of what you would expect in terms of when and who are out there during that time period. So again, most of the work that's happening in Brookline is track work. So I'm just going to start with progression of work that would happen over the course of an, of an evening, typical evening. So they determine the work limits and they, the first thing that they do is to cut the rails. And they're going to cut rails and they're going to do work in sections of panels. So in order to, to remove a panel, they have to cut, you know, four, four rails. And there would basically be two methods to do that. They'll either cut it, or they will torch it. And that's the contractor's means and methods. And at this point, I don't, I can't report to you what method that they'll be employing, but those are one of the two methods that they'd be using.
Both are noisy.
Yes. Cut, the saws is noisier than the- Yes, cut, the saw is noisier than the torch, but they're both disruptive. Then they will, you know, after dislodging the rails, then they will take it, the panel, contractor tells, they'll do about 100-foot panel, they'll do about 100-foot linear feet each night, and it's part of the dismantling, and they'll move it off-site. They'll dig about six inches below the bottom of the tie to remove the ballast, because we want to put in new ballast. This is a whole new track bed track section. They'll install the track panel, so they'll bring in a new track panel, drop it in, connect the track panel, meaning the rails, to the adjacent rails. They'll place new ballast. These are all shown as kind of day and night pictures, but this is, this would all be work that'd be done at night. So they'd bring in the ballast, then they would tamp it, basically, so that, to make sure that they get the voids out, and you've got the, you know, nicely packed in there. And that's generally the type of work that you would have on a recurring nightly basis, and they would, you know, go section by section down the corridor. Special track work is basically your switches, so, you know, going from one track to the other. We've got several locations along the corridor where we have this work, and we have that work in Brookline as well. This is longer lead items, so this isn't the type of work we're going to see probably until starting sometime next summer, fall-type timeframe, because they have to get the materials, shop drawings approved, and then submit it, and then they have to order their materials. And then they need a, you know, a weekend, because they need that much time in order to get it in and placed. So signal work, there is signal work. It's going to be from Reservoir out towards Newton. And so just, I'm just going to run through kind of a series of the different activities here. You know, we'd be installing aeroically the fiber optic cable. We're going to be digging trenches so that the cable can run under. We're going to tie them into the new equipment and signal houses. We're going to be installing the house, placing the houses so that they can tie into. And we're going to be demolishing all of the existing cases that exist. So that's really, again, sort of the progression, the signal work. There's not a lot of that in Brookline. Again, the majority of the work is track, but there will be some signal work, again, at that section on the western end of Brookline. So again, some of the considerations are, you know, this is noisy work. You guys, I'm sure you already know that, your residents have already told you, that when the T comes in to do any type of maintenance work, it's noisy, it's disruptive. We apologize for the fact that it's, you know, the type of work it is, but it has long-term benefits. But we do want to, you know, but we do want to take into consideration what, you know, what the density is around. So we looked at where the multi-unit properties are, where the special track work is, where the regular track work is, along the section of work that's going to be done in Brookline. And, you know, I'm not saying anything you don't already know, the majority of the track work, particularly in the Beacons Field area, is next to pretty high density. So then we just want to talk about, well, what does this mean in terms of noise, and how quickly will we be out of the way? This is kind of hard to read. There's, each length, each link represents 100 feet. 100 feet represents the work that would be done in a typical evening. Now, as I mentioned, the contractor is very, very interested in piggybacking on some of our other weekends, which they think that they can get a lot of this work done very quickly if they can get weekend access. I think about 800 feet a weekend if they can get weekend access. Otherwise, it's about 100 feet a night. So you can see that, you know, you know, how far along, if you're a resident, a budding, and we chose Beacon Field because it's one of the dense areas, you know, how many nights is it going to take for somebody to go along and get further and further away? And what does that mean in terms of noise levels? So one of the things we did also is we have noise contours. So the noisiest equipment is about 888 decibels. Well, what does that mean? So, you know, someone talking to you three feet away is about 70 decibels on an indoor noise level. These types of sounds, we'll talk a little bit too about the different equipment and the type of sounds they make. But as you can imagine, the further you get away, the more the noise dissipates, and it's somewhat of an exponential reduction in noise level. So if you're standing right in the middle of that diagram, when you go, and it's 88 decibels, you're right at the equipment, 50 feet away, you drop six decibels. Another 50 feet away, you drop another six decibels. And another 50 feet away, you drop another six decibels. So in the backyards of those homes, you're at 50 feet away, so you're at about 70, I'm sorry, you're at about 82 decibels. And at 100 feet away, when you're about a front, you know, right in the front of those residents on the lower side, it's about 76 decibels. So what is, you know, what are the other types of noises does that relate to? So at about 70 to 80 decibels, you know, the left column is outdoor activities, the right column is typical indoor activities, as I said. Normal speech at three feet is about 70 decibels. A vacuum cleaner, say, about 75 decibels is at 10 feet away. Relating to that to outdoor activities, you know, a noisy urban area during the daytime is about 80. So at 50 feet away, you're at about 82 decibels. At 100 feet away, you're at about 76. 150 feet away, you're at about 68. So, and then it progressively goes down. So obviously, the further you are away, the less disruptive it's going to be. So this gives you a sense of, you know, noise levels. And then we focused on the track work because much of that work is in Brookline, and that's a lot of the noisiest work. So when you cut the rails, it will be, you know, sharpened intermittent. We expect that in order to shut, for, cut four rails, it would be about 45 minutes to an hour to do that. Again, so that would be work that would be starting, you know, generally between 9:00 PM and 10:00 PM typically on a weeknight. And then they remove the existing track panel. Again, heavy machinery, you've got, you know, rumbling-type sounds, same thing with removing the ballast, installing the track panels, placing the ballast, and then tamping the track. But the far-right column, we say, can the noise be suppressed? So we are requiring noise mitigation as part of, you know, the contractor's responsibility. Types of things that can be done to mitigate, back, you know, minimizing, you know, using, adjusting backup alarms so that they aren't, that we found that that's some of the largest complaints we get, is the backup beeping.
Backup lights, yeah. People hate them.
Yeah. You know, limiting the truck equipment idling, silencers on intake lines, and compressors, lining the dump trucks when they put the material in. Noise blankets where possible. I'm just going to go back one second to the last slide. There's a couple of, there's a couple of activities, however, where the noise can't be suppressed. Cutting is one, and then the tamping the track is the other. But the activities in between, we're looking to make sure that the contractor is doing everything possible to mitigate those noise impacts. So again, what are some of the contractor's requirements? You know, they're required to submit a plan to us to identify equipment that can and cannot be operated with sound suppression, means of suppressing, providing a hotline number 24/7 throughout their operation. And again, as part of the plan, we review to make sure that they have provided the sound mitigation that's applicable to the type of equipment that's being, that they will be using. We have a communication plan. We have been, we have visited here, visited here before with a smaller group. We're happy to be here tonight. We also plan on having a public meeting next week. Again, with the intent that if the early start was going to be October, we want to make sure we get out ahead of it. But I'm going to reiterate that that is an early start date. It may change slightly, but we do expect that there will be some activity this fall. Project website, we already have a project website up, and we also have an ability for anybody interested to register on the website to get email updates and email blasts about what's looking ahead. We don't do as much, you know, we don't do things like, like the Twitter updates, because that's like for real-time, immediate what's going on. But if you want notification, like what's coming up in the next two weeks or three weeks, the look-aheads, that's what we get the email blasts for. So, so we have that for when we have community meetings, and people can sign up at different locations as well. But we also have it on the website where you can register. We'll have media advisories, again, T alerts when it's real-time types of impacts. Certainly, we'll have coordination, and we understand, obviously, we've got the high school project that's upcoming, so want to make sure that the timing of any of our busing would be coordinated with the work that's out there. And I remember reviewing that application. And then certainly in-person notifications. So we would, before any major activities of work, we flyer all of the areas that are proximate to where we're going to be working. You know, we would go into, you know, the adjacent apartment buildings and post in there, and any other businesses as well, to try to get the word out as much as possible. So a lot of this is a balance between, we've got our MBTA customers, and certainly community members who are using the service to get, you know, to get to work and fun activities, but then we also have the abutters that we want to be respectful for as we are, you know, upgrading the system to hopefully benefit everyone.
Would you notice, basically, anyone who falls within a certain decibel level, like you showed?
Say, when, the question about?
So the abutters that you're notifying?
Yes.
Would they, like, would it mimic the graph that you had for the decibel level?
Oh, I see what you're saying. It's like the extent of the area that we would flyer.
Yeah.
I would, you know, I could defer that to Nancy Farrell, our public communications person. If you wanted to describe, let me just go back, because I see exactly what you're saying. So in terms of the area?
Yes.
Come up.
Yeah.
So our vast TV audience.
We're still awake.
Yeah.
We're not watching the Red Sox.
Yes, we'll do the front streets, and then we'll do actually the back as well, so that, in some places where there's a field or something, we'll just do one street. And I'm actually an abutter, I'm proud to say, and live in Brookline, so, so I know the neighborhood pretty well, so I assure you, we'll cover it well. Brookline's a lot easier, Newton's a lot longer. But we'll also be flyering, you know, with advanced notice, and we'll have a hotline, and people will be able to sign up for notices as well. So we'll do as much as we can to make people feel comfortable, because it, there is an inconvenience, for sure.
Thank you.
So my one comment on the slides is, when you show this further in the public, change city of Brookline to town of Brookline.
I didn't catch that.
I think that was a Where's Waldo thing, you know? Is everyone awake, you know?
So, yeah, it's funny, as you were going through the notes I was making, you know, notice to abutters, a hotline phone number, so that, that's covered. One thing we can do better on, I suspect if word of this presentation had gotten out wider, we'd have more people here. So I know you're doing another public meeting, you said, what, next week?
Yes, next Thursday.
Next Wednesday?
6:00 PM. Here.
In this room. That's, that's actually a little problematic, because people, in this town, like the week before Labor Day tends to be a big, pretty quiet.
Everybody's away.
Yeah. So expect to hear some criticism.
We also wanted to be respectful of, you know, of the holiday schedule in September as well.
Right, right.
While giving enough advanced notice, if, you know, assuming we were to begin in early October. So we're, we do recognize that. We viewed it as a challenge, but our other options were either having it be very close to when the work could potentially begin, or we wanted to avoid the holidays earlier in September as well, so.
That's why we're, our select board meetings are on Thursdays in the entire month of September.
Right. This presentation, or a version of it, once it's, once you get
Yes.
Replaced town of Brookline with, city of Brookline with town of Brookline, will this be online anywhere that?
Yes, and we post it on our website, and we can certainly make it available to you if you choose to post it on your website.
I think that would be a good idea.
Right.
Because people do go to our website, and we could give people notice that this, you know, latest news kind of thing, that this is happening, and we could also mention the public presentations, so I think it would be a good idea.
We can certainly do that.
Any other?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I'm very thrilled that you know about our project at the high school. You know what we're going to do, and you also understand that we want to work with you so that we're not, you know, tripping over one another. And, you know, our project will involve, at the very least, lowering the catenary right in that area where we're going to build over the T-tracks. And we're obviously going to use the whole weekend, night and weekend model, so we, it's encouraging to know that we can coordinate with you on that. And the second thing, and I also, by the way, gave our recording secretary here some of my cards, so that, I don't, have you been in touch with Donna Camiola?
No.
Okay. So I know you've been in touch, we have several people who are working on this, so, but if you have any issues, I'm, this board's representative to the committee that's overseeing the project, so I'd be happy to try to iron out any difficulties, although I don't think there will be, because we have some terrific people working on the project, and they seem like everything is being coordinated very well. I'd like to ask about pests and pest control. Now, I, it doesn't sound as if you're going to be doing much really digging up of, you're going to be moving the tracks, but it doesn't sound like that involves a lot of digging. And traditionally, those little critters come out when you dig holes in the
Right. We have rodent control as part of pretty much standard of our, within our contracts, because we do expect that. You know, we are, we're going to be, you know, we are going to be disturbing, you know, the track bed in the right-of-way, so.
So there will be some disturbance of nests or whatever.
Whatever might be.
Right. So then I would add that to your, I would add that to your presentation, just so that people know that you're thinking about it.
That's a good point.
Because it is, it is a concern. The other thing is the noise. I know people hate those backup alarms, and whenever there's a project, a T project in Brookline, we seem to get phone calls complaining, you know, I didn't know about it, et cetera. So the more flyers and other things you can do to publicize it would be great, because, you know, people who buy property near T or near schools or near commercial areas have to understand that, you know, there are sometimes things that go on there that need to be, and it's going to be a little bit disruptive, so.
Right. You know, frankly, by having this concerted project, I mean, really, it is a, is meant to be a long-term improvement.
Right.
So I know that we have our engineering maintenance forces out typically in different areas, but this is going to be very much a, you know, a progressive-type project, a linear project, and again, a more planned in a way that can be better communicated, I think, to when we'll be out there. And it will be, again, it's going to be over a period of blocks within the following two years primarily. Be some work this fall, but it's really going to be primarily the next two years with which the work will be done. The contractor's communicated that they don't expect that they're going to be working on times other than when they get the longer access, because otherwise, they could theoretically work between 1:30 and, basically, 1:30 and 4:00 in the morning, but it's just not productive enough to really use those work windows.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
All right.
So just to clarify, is it just one contractor for the entire job?
So it's a joint venture. The joint venture is between two contractors, Barletta and Fishback &amp; Moore, and one specializes more in the track work, one specializes more in the electrical work.
Interesting.
And they join together because it's a track and signal project.
Yeah. And then just out of sheer curiosity, the rail ties, are they going to be wood or?
Wood. They're going to be wood.
Okay.
Only a transportation person would answer that question. And I assume the steel is American-made steel?
Yes, it is. This is, we have
Oh, you're lucky you found some.
By America.
Exactly. FTA federal funds, by America provisions. Yes.
I mean, I don't care. We'll be subject to our beloved president's tariffs, tire rates. All right, tire rates, right. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, and
Thank you for allowing us to present.
Yeah.
You were very clear and concise. Thank you.
Right.
Thanks.
Okay. So we have a couple of additional items on the agenda. And the next one is a question of making an additional appointment to the Taxation Aid Committee. And a select person, Franco, was looking for someone from the Disability Commission to volunteer, and he found that person in Rob Heist. volunteer, and he found that person in Rob Heist. So, I'm going to suggest that we appoint Mr. Heist to the committee. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye, select person.
Yes, enthusiastically, yes.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now, warrant articles. So, what's, what are we in store for?
So, not a lot has come in as of yet. This item is essentially for the board to have any discussion that's necessary around warrant articles that potentially would be filed on behalf of the board. Not your typical budget amendment, unpaid bills type of article, but if there was a committee you were working on that was producing something that needed to be filed. One item that I think we are going to be looking at filing is, I'm hearing from the school committee that they're interested in advancing the schematic design money that was appropriated this past May. If you recall, there was a condition placed on the appropriation that essentially asked that before the money gets spent, the 1.5 million that we have appropriated for schematic design, that town meeting has to vote to release the funds in order to move forward. So...
So, of course, we have two projects, and we had originally been planning for one. So, we're going to have to come up with a way for, to fund two schematic design projects.
True. But, it also would be a challenge that both of these projects would be on the same timetable, which...
Correct.
You know, at one point, we did assume that the high school was going to be on the same timetable, and the timing slipped a little bit. So, I think, you know, we'll see where we are with feasibility by the time November comes around, and then make a determination as to whether or not we're ready to move forward.
Right. But, in any event, we have to put it on the warrant.
Correct.
And whether, whether we're ready, I guess time will tell, to move it forward.
So, there's a, well, first of all, let me say that I had a question, why we didn't include any specific warrant articles for your consideration on the warrant, or, excuse me, on our calendar this evening. And, we just didn't know. I mean, we didn't know. We're holding this meeting. The warrant is enclosed for another week or so, week and a half, or, well, I guess, yeah, a week and a half.
Before our next meeting.
And, it's before our next meeting. So, this is the meeting that we need to get your authorization. And, so, we don't have any language necessarily, but we just are identifying some issues. So, in addition to the school project, we are considering a parcel of land that's for sale at 440 Boylston Street. We're in preliminary stages of that. But, town meeting must approve all acquisitions of real property for a municipality. And, so, we need an article for that purpose, just in case we're able to reach agreement on this, and it's prudent for the town to proceed. So, I'm suggesting that you authorize us to prepare a warrant article that would deal with the acquisition of that property contingent, of course, on a lot of issues.
Are you looking for a vote tonight, or?
Yeah, I think we need your authorization to allow us to submit warrant articles on your behalf.
Okay.
So, why don't we recap, then? So, we have the article on acquisition of 440 Boylston Street, and what else?
And, the potential authorization of advancement of the 1.5 million dollars for schematic design.
And, how about the second?
Well, I would need a funding source in order to do that. So, if we did find miraculously a funding source for an additional 1.5 million dollars, we could deal with that with the budget amendment. The language allows us to do that.
The overall budget amendment, it's already part of the warrant.
Correct.
So, why do we need, oh, because the...
The town meeting vote explicitly said, "Come back to us" for a yes.
Gotcha. I'm not aware, none of the committees that I've been working on are ready to come forward with any warrant articles. I know we're going to be, two committees I'm working on have potential warrant articles with a goal of May, just to fill you in. One is potentially Waldo Durgan. If that's going to go ahead, it would be with a May timeframe. The other one, which is just getting started in terms of study, is Airbnb. The committee that's going to be kind of the lead citizen committee guiding staff is going to be the zoning bylaw committee. And then, if licensing is a piece of that, at that point, I guess we'd get the licensing committee involved. But, for the time being, I think the zoning bylaw committee will be the lead citizen group on that one. So, that's the stuff I'm aware of, that the committees would be sponsoring, that I'm involved in.
Kent Street is, you know, moving forward, but we're still in a preliminary stage of looking at what RFP language could potentially look like, how we even evaluate, what proposals we would get back, what kind of evaluation criteria we, you know, should be using. And then, we want to have another public meeting to get more public feedback before we pursue anything. So, I don't expect a warrant article to be filed for this fall. And, I'm not even sure we'll be ready for May.
Okay. So, let's, so, we need two motions. One would be to authorize a warrant article for releasing the 1.5 million schematic money. I guess that would be for Baldwin, or...
Well...
For a school project.
I think it's really, you know, depending on where we are with the feasibility studies, because they're both running concurrently right now. So...
Okay. So, for a school project.
Well, we need, we need at least a placeholder.
We need a project that will be ready to vote on by November, yeah.
Right. But, we need a placeholder warrant.
Yes, one sec.
Right.
We can phrase it so it's flexible, I think.
I think so.
And then, we also would, I'll also offer a motion to authorize the filing warrant article necessary for the acquisition of 440 Boylston Street. That one, too, would have to be kind of a placeholder, since we haven't engaged in extended negotiations. We don't know the prices. And, frankly, we don't know whether we can do a deal. You know, we're going to try.
We're going to find the money.
Yeah, right. So, okay. So, those are the two motions. Any comments, discussion? So, I guess I'll move it to a vote. All those in favor of the two motions, releasing a warrant article to release the 1.5 million schematic school projects, and to explore the acquisition of 440 Boylston Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have one more item on the agenda, and this is appointments to the Housing Advisory Board, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Klockner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one current vacancy on the board that was formerly held by Karen Kepler. And, we've interviewed a gentleman by the name of Jonathan Klein for the Housing Advisory Board. We do have an expiring vacancy with Mr. Blood's term, but it is very early. Actually, his term has not even expired yet. It's hard to believe we were ahead of, ahead of one of these committees, but we are. So, I'm not sure that one is necessarily ready for reappointment or appointment. But, we could, I think we have some other potential applicants.
I, I'm comfortable with offering Mr. Blood's a reappointment. He's been the chair, and I think he's done a phenomenal job of leading that committee.
I'm wondering whether, though, there's a notice issue here, because we...
Oh, an appointment to the, the...
Yeah, I think it's...
The notice is singular.
Correct.
Which was my understanding.
And, I think it says possible action, vote to appoint Jonathan Klein. It doesn't say, and I wondered why, and I realize it's because his term isn't finished yet.
So, I guess the imminent, so, we probably should have made appointments in the plural in the calendar to cover us. But, since we, so, we'll have to do Mr. Blood at the next meeting.
Well, I suppose. I guess I just, we just didn't, you know, the term isn't over yet, and we had advertised for...
Would you say we have more applicants?
I think so. I'm not positive of that. But, I think if you don't mind, you know, I think everybody knows Mr. Blood's an outstanding member and chair.
Yeah, no, and I'm just suggesting, if we have more applicants, maybe we should wait.
Well, okay. So, what do you want to do?
I'm willing to go ahead and appoint Mr. Klein. He's imminently qualified.
He's qualified.
He's, he's got a skill set that committee needs.
Yeah, and we have a vacancy that's been, existed for a while. So, I know that they're very...
And they're very anxious to get that filled.
Eager to get that going. So, let me put then, before you, for a term expiring in 2020, Jonathan Klein.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And, let's try to, just, the next meeting, let's just do the other appointment and move on. So, I think that's, that's it for tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Complete our business. Next meeting is September 6th, Thursday.